Of the Hubbardston Planning Board recognizing that we have three members, two present in person, one present online. And also our associate member, so we do have a quorum with the three that are present plus the associate. Planning Board meetings are broadcast live and digitally recorded. This meeting is being held both in person and virtually through Zoom. Presumed to the COVID nineteen rules allowing public meetings to be conducted remotely. So that board and committee members as well as members of the public can participate remotely. Uh, so any public comments or any comments from any members of the public? Okay, it doesn't look like there are any comments online either. So moving forward to our next item, which is minutes for acceptance. Uh, we have our January fourth twenty twenty-three minutes for acceptance. And. Does anybody have anything to discuss on that? Otherwise, uh, I would entertain a motion.
I read the minutes prior to coming to this meeting. I was not present at the day of the meeting, however, I believe that I can vote as a result of the fact that I.
Yes.
Read them and so, uh, no comments other than. Uh, thank you very much again, Mark, for putting everything together.
Alright, so, uh, do we have, um, motion?
I'd like to present the motion that we accept the minutes of January the fourth.
Recording in progress.
That's okay.
I'll second that.
Alright, so here in a first and a second, any discussion or any edits? They, uh, they looked pretty good to me. Mark's been doing a really great job with them. Uh.
Alright, trying to hook up my other screens so I can.
No problem. Any, uh, any discussion on the malice?
She shook her head no.
Okay, sorry, I I couldn't see that. Yeah, I I was looking at them with the non-verbal who didn't, yeah. So, uh, hearing no discussion, let's have a vote on them. So because we have a virtual member, we'll need to do it as a roll call vote. So Mister Steiger.
Hi.
Uh, Miss Livdahl.
I'll aye. Aye.
And I vote aye, so the, uh, the minutes are accepted. Uh, so under new business, we don't have anything listed. Um. We'll, uh. We'll leave it at that. Uh, under old business, we have the, the crane clay pit restoration decision. Uh, we need to re-sign the document on that for it to be filed. Uh, I don't know, Mark, if you have anything you need to add to that?
You're the only one that's gonna be signing it tonight.
I should stop in though and sign it tomorrow.
Yeah, I will, um, Alice, Alice, I will leave it with Bobby.
Okay.
It needs to be.
Be there tomorrow on a Friday?
No, she won't be there tomorrow.
Okay, Monday.
Next, next week, uh, with Bobby.
Alright, I'm sorry once again.
Um. I've actually got, I don't know if you guys recall, um, the last time we, when we passed this around for signatures at the last meeting. John actually signed it. But according to my minutes, he wasn't at that meeting where you decided. Anybody remember if he was at the meeting when we were watching the PowerPoint presentation?
I think he was. I think he came.
Yeah, I think he.
Didn't he? Yeah.
So it's my minutes that are on. Um.
Yeah, he's, um.
Didn't pick the.
Well, if he, if he, if he, if he shows up late. If he shows up later, we'll, um, we'll confirm and modify the minutes if necessary.
But we, he doesn't make very many meetings, but I, I think he was there because it was one of the few that he was able to make. I think he came in late.
Yeah, he's.
Because of accident fifty-six and sixty-eight.
That was the last one. That was the one where he signed it.
Yeah, he was at.
Previous one where he actually made the decision.
Yeah, I believe he came in online, uh, in that one.
Yeah.
So I, yeah, I think we will have to double check with him.
He usually attends one way or the other, but.
Anyway, one, one version or another of this will be with Bobby. Um, so Alice and Bill and John, if appropriate.
Yep.
Will need to swing by and sign.
Alright, well, we will, uh, we'll figure it out and, um, I'll help you reach out to whoever we need on that. Anything else on it?
I don't.
Alright, uh, on to administrative matters. Uh, first one being a review of the draft planning board annual report. Uh, Mark placed the updated version on the drive with the, uh, the edits that we had recommended when we reviewed it at the last meeting. Uh, it looked pretty good to me so far. I don't know if anybody else had any comments or anything else to add to it.
I don't. But I'm having.
Yeah, the, uh, the edits, the edits from the previous meeting were pretty minimal and, uh, I just made, made those changes. That's the current version.
Is that the draft? The one that? Is that it? And I apologize, I didn't bring, so I'm having, thank you, it's a bit creepy, it's creepy. I, I don't remember seeing anything here that. Uh, so the only comment I had was is that on the, on the battery energy storage, uh, we're not awaiting results. We're just a- awaiting a review from the Attorney General. So th- there, there, there's no results that really come from them. It's just, just a review.
Well, there's, there's, there's an approval or a disapproval.
Well, therefore it's a, it's a review and therefore a, uh, approval or disapproval. Not like they are influencing it in and providing some.
Awaiting, awaiting approval.
Some, something other than, than those two items. That, that was my.
Awaiting approval from A G.
Yeah. Yeah, that's, that's a, that's a fair criticism, I think.
Exactly.
I think all the changes got caught. Other than that, I mean, I don't see anything else.
Correct.
Right, do we have to vote to approve that?
I don't think you really do.
Yeah, I don't think we do either. Do you remember if, uh, if we had to or if we have by custom, Alice?
I always voted on everything on it because I never wanted to, but I don't think there's a requirement. But, I mean, does, we have a quorum, can we just both take it? It would be.
Yeah, that's, uh, that makes sense to me. How about?
Safe, it's the safe way, right? In case anybody question.
Yeah, sure. How about a motion?
Oh, oh, okay. I make it?
Sure.
Sorry. I'll make a motion to, uh, approve the annual report for twenty twenty-two.
I second the motion.
Hearing a first and a second, any discussion? Hearing no discussion, uh, let's have a roll call vote. Mister Steiger?
Yes.
Miss Livdahl?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes, so the, uh, the motion carries and the report is approved by the board. Uh, moving next down the list is administrative matters, which is review of other zoning bylaw changes requiring town meeting vote. Uh, Mark's been working very diligently on, uh, on what we have.
Childcare first or second law, are you just gonna consolidate them all?
Uh.
Well, actually, the only thing we have is childcare, so let's start with childcare.
Oh, yeah, I understand. Yeah, um. Yeah, let's, let's start with that, I guess. So we're, we're actually, sorry, we're gonna go back to B, which is review of zoning bylaw changes. Childcare facilities as an allowed use. Um, and we talked about this at the last meeting at the very end, that this was something that I think we needed to take a look at. It seemed like the board was generally in favor of it. So, uh, Mark and I did some additional research. And we came up with the changes that we believe we need to make in order to be compliant with state law. Um, and really to, uh, to, to help people out with something that really is a service where there's a critical need right now. So the, uh, the draft documents were placed into the, uh, planning board drive for review. But essentially what we do is we add to the allowed uses for the residential agricultural zone. Uh, can I borrow that for a moment, Mark? Just so I can quote the right language for the record. Alright. So we add to, um, to allowable uses in the residential district, which is our residential agricultural zone. Uh, childcare center or a school age childcare program as defined in Massachusetts general law, chapter fifteen D, section one A. Uh, and that is absolutely required by the state. Uh, we're not supposed to have a special permit requirement for those. Uh, and we also add family childcare home as defined in Massachusetts general law, chapter fifteen D, section one A. I think there's a couple of ways you can look at that. Uh, the way I look at it is that that seems to be included in the childcare center definition. But, or childcare facility definition, but since it's possible to read it and think that that's not included, we decided to list both. To have them both be included there. Um.
Yeah, I, I would actually expand it one more as well, um, to include large family childcare home. If you're intending to rope in all, all private home-based childcare.
Yeah.
A, a, a family childcare home is less than six kids. A large family childcare home is between six and ten.
And I, I believe that is the intent of the statute, so, um. Uh, I believe we probably would wanna make that change. We're also gonna wanna run this through town council, uh, before, uh, we present this. Just because with the way we're trying to comply with the state rule, um, the language here, it might matter. Uh, so it's, it's gonna be worth just having a look at it briefly ahead of time.
Yeah.
Um.
I think, I think we can, we, we called it out as two separate lines in this version. I think we can consolidate it all into a single.
Yep.
Single one, just listing all four definitions.
And, um, then what we did is we removed daycare center from the, uh, the special permit required list. Uh, for residential districts because it is obvious under state law that that's not allowed. Uh, and as we, we saw when we had somebody come in to ask us for a determination, it created an issue where, um. Uh, we really couldn't give them a good answer on whether or not they could run a daycare. And that's not a great outcome for us to be saying no to businesses like that. Uh, so then because we have, um. Our allowable uses are layered, uh, we also need to do it for the town center district. So we essentially make the same changes under four, three, where we add childcare center or school age childcare program as defined, and then we list the statute. And then family childcare home as defined in chapter fifteen D, section one A. So what, um, what I would like to do tonight, uh, is I would like to open this up for a little bit more discussion. But otherwise, I'd like to talk about scheduling, uh, public hearing for this, uh, because we are running out of time before the town meeting. So with that said, what are everybody's thoughts and what do we have for questions on this?
You're open for a discussion?
Yep.
Okay. I mean, I think. Go ahead, Alice.
Go ahead.
No, go ahead, Alice, you're, you're remote.
I was just, I was just looking at, uh. The, the statute that says, uh, you know, the land structures are subject to reasonable regulations, bulk height, sub yard size, lot area setbacks. So it's, you know, so we're protected in that, in that way. Anyway, I think it, um, I think it's fine. It should be sent, sent off to town council for review, but maybe have the hearing first? I don't know which, which order you do things.
Typically, I think.
It'll be, I mean, it, it should, it should take thirty seconds of, uh.
Yeah, it's gonna be a pretty quick.
Carolyn's time. Um, I, I think we can consolidate the language like I was suggesting and just shoot it off to her before the, before the public hearing.
Yeah. I, I think that makes sense.
The, 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 the only, the only question I bring up is, is if as a result of the public hearing, there's any additional modification, we'll be going back to town council a second time. And so town council should typically, and I believe in my understanding is they typically review all of the bylaws. Prior to going to the town meeting anyway, and that's the perfect time for us to ensure that we've ticked everything that is required.
They, they, town council reviews the warrant, but I don't know that that review of the warrant rises to the same level as doing a substantive review.
We can't ask them to include that, uh, a more particular review be done as a result of our concerns.
Yep, uh.
Well, we should expand our conversation to the, uh, the rest of the bylaw changes.
Yeah.
That were, that we've been talking about as, as well.
Ex- exactly, and I was, I was gonna bring that up. I think it's important for us to make sure, I, I.
Can I just, can I two cents is don't wait till town council gets it till they send the warrant because there's no time to fix anything if they find anything?
That's a good point.
That's, that, that is, that is absolutely true.
And I, there are also, I do think we have to let, uh, we have to s- inform the select board, don't we?
At some point in time we do.
Through, through hearing and, yeah, so that, that's the process that I remember, but I would send it to town council sooner rather than later.
Yeah.
Cause they have. Yeah.
Yeah, I, um.
Because, just a terrible problem last year, trying to fix things at the last minute.
What's our timeline right now based on when this has to be finalized by the planning board? Do you have the notion of the dates?
Well, it would ha- it would have to go to the select board, um, for their March meeting.
Their March meeting.
Mid, mid, mid-March, mid-March. The wa- the warrant closes beginning of April.
Yeah.
Okay, so for us, putting together a, uh. A meeting where we can get public comments, I think, we, we should, we should get this on, we, we should try to get this done as soon as possible.
Yeah.
Because I think it, it, it is important. And the concern here is, is that, I know you're a recent father and we have a recent grandmother. Uh, and, and, and both as attorneys also, you have probably read this here quite cautiously. However, I do also feel like there may be some other parents here or individuals who might have an interest in opening up a daycare who may have some additional items that they would like to, for us to review. And that's why I, 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 I'm hesitant enough sending this off to the attorneys without really getting the proper feedback from potential town member, and nobody may come. But I do believe that this is something that is important enough for us to be able to get, um, get feedback from the town.
Yeah, I, I, I think you could do it in either, either order. I mean, it's, it's such an easy review for council that it probably doesn't matter much either way.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think we could probably do both. I think it's that, that easier for me. I, I think it's, it, it might just be fifteen minutes I both times.
Yeah, either or both.
So I'll just need to check with Nate and see what he's got.
I'm just concerned that, let me put it this way, these statutes regarding, uh, what can and cannot be in a bylaw. Uh, how long have we been in conflict?
I don't know when this was added to, uh, what is it, forty A, section three?
Eighty-three, yeah.
Yeah, I, I didn't look at the statutory history, but there are some other things that are in there like greenhouses. And we do need to do a more comprehensive review, but I don't think we can get that more comprehensive.
I'm, I'm not asking for a more comprehensive review of our by, of our bylaw right now, but I do think that we have to do this here. Because I do believe, and I was under the impression that some years ago, we had requested a more thorough review be done of our bylaws. And I think it is high time because we've, we've been, we've been struggling with some items that have been in our bylaws that have been. And it's a hard thing to do because of the time constraints that we have and quite frankly, also the way some of these bylaws were written some time ago. Um, but, but, but if anything, it does show that when critical things like this suddenly pop up, we're scrambling to try to fix them.
Yeah, yeah, no, that's, that's very true. And I've, I brought that up with Nate. It's definitely on his radar. It's something that I believe is gonna end up a part of the strategic plan for the town.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, because there are multiple ways to potentially fund that. Um, it's a bigger project than we would likely just be able to do through direct, like, local technical assistance. Um, I know recently the town of Paxton was able to get, it was over a hundred thousand dollars from the state to go in and do a thorough rewrite of their bylaws.
Yeah.
But the other reason that they were able to do that was because they were brought in on MBTA zoning. Um, which is something that could happen to us, but, um.
True.
But going, going to the state house and asking for that money might be the way that that happens.
Okay, alright.
I actually think this amendment that you can't require a special permit and stuff was, uh, is fairly recent to the mass general law. Because I know, I know that, uh, I don't know, about six years ago, uh, we had to get one in Paxton for the, to put a daycare in this church.
Yeah, unfortunately, we as a town don't have a subscription to Westlaw or a copy of the MGLA, so I wasn't able to pull the statutory notes on it.
What we really need to do is go to the annual meetings, you know, the CLAs where they do the wrap-up, what changed in the year. Somebody should go to that every year.
Yeah.
But now there are a lot of things that need fixing and, you know.
But let, let me make a suggestion here. Um, I, I would suggest that you do a public hearing, your second meeting in February. And that in, that include both the daycare and the half dozen other changes to the bylaws that we've been discussing, um, that are not terribly substantive, but do require town, town meeting vote. Things like changing the building inspector to building commissioner and straightening out the zoning map and all that. Um, Alice, I've, I've started looking at that document. Um.
Yeah, I'm really glad you took it up.
And.
Just don't have time.
In some, i- i- in, in some respects, Carolyn's latest version muddied the water further. Because she accepted some changes that should not have been ac- accepted. And so now, now they're buried in the text, not highlighted in any way. So I'm having to work back and forth between three versions of the document to figure out what we're, what we really need to do. But I'm, but I'm getting there and I can, I can be there before our first meeting in Fe- Fe- February.
That, that would be huge.
That is powerful.
Alice, Alice, I think we'll probably need to meet, uh, in a working session before that. Um.
Okay.
Maybe, uh, maybe next week sometime, but.
Yes.
But I can definitely get there and I think you could have a public hearing for that, that subset of things.
Yeah, that, that would be awesome. I think that'd be a pretty, pretty productive spring town meeting for us. Um, I know from, from just looking at the, the daycare issue. It was a challenge to make sure that I was even looking at a current version of our allowable uses. And if it takes work for me to chase down what a current version of our allowable uses are, that's, that's not good for. That's not a good statement of how user-friendly we are.
Like, like for Duffy.
Yeah.
They would change the accessory use, the definitions that was part of the warrant article.
Yeah, and some.
But I think it picked up.
Yeah, and some, some of those, um, Carolyn suggests need to be approved at town meeting, so that's, that's part of what made it really confusing. I'm not a hundred percent sure that the version that we have here is what is currently in effect. It's just my best guess based upon what was in Carolyn's, um, marked up copy.
Well, we, we had, it go back to the warrant from last year, at least with accessory use, it specifically, because that was one of the big arguments. Amended, you know, the two things to allow it also with the town center district. So the issue with that is that we should have a typical pyramid zoning structure where everything starts out, the use above, everything in the, the tier above. The more restrictive is allowed and the less restrictive, but for some reason, the town center wasn't done that way.
Yeah.
And I don't know what the history was, but, so every new use that you add to residential, you also have to add into town's center because it doesn't carry through.
Yep.
And it's stupid anyway because we have, the other district is, doesn't really have any land in it. Um, you know, the, well, the commercial district does.
Yeah.
I'm thinking of the industrial, yeah, okay, so that's, I mean, it's, there are many problems, but.
Yeah.
So the commercial use and the residential use both allow it because the commercial allows everything in the residential. But the town center doesn't allow everything in the residential, so it has to be written in especially.
So.
That makes, that was done at the town meeting for accessory uses because uh, and then a bunch of definitions were deleted.
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, so are you guys all agreed on the sub, on the substance of this daycare change? And I'll.
Looks to be.
I'll work on the formatting to roll it into this document with the other moderate changes.
So we will, uh, will, we'll put together everything we need to, to get that published in time. While we have the draft, so. Excellent. And we'll do the same, we'll do the same thing, but also incorporating the work group with Alice for the zoning bylaw changes requiring town meeting vote. And by changes, we mean the things that we thought were already changed, but we need to, we need to button up with a vote.
Right.
Just, uh, just for the public that's listening there. We're, we're not talking about a wholesale change of the bylaws. We're really talking about editorial review for things that we thought were, were in there. Um, so if there's nothing else on that, moving down to update on ongoing projects with MRPC. So we had a meeting with MRPC, um. With, uh, with Karen. Thought it was a pretty good meeting. Uh, we talked about the three projects that the town has opened. Uh, we talked about some opportunities for some other direct assistance money, uh, for working on other programs. Or rather, working on other projects, uh, specifically helping us out with the agricultural accessory bylaw that we've been working on, finishing the drafting on that and, uh, helping us finish the master plan. So those would be our two new grant opportunities with them for twenty twenty-three. Um, Karen has some, some items that she owes us. She was gonna take a look at what the status was for the town center project and what the status was for the bylaws for the, excuse me, for the solar bylaw. And was going to, uh, spend some time digging into the status for the master plan. And we're gonna get back together with the same working group, which consisted of, uh, Nate, Mark, Allison, myself. And, uh, and try to get all these things back on track to where they need to be. So I, I think we're moving in that direction. We don't have super great next steps yet, but I think we will soon. I would, I would expect to hear some of those within the next day or two. Um, because really Karen's only had like three working days since we met because of the holiday, so.
Do we have a, a, a sort of like a high-level timeline that we're looking at, the outstanding items to be completed by?
That is a challenge because we have the original timelines that came with the projects.
Right.
And we are so far off the timelines that they need to be redrafted. And that is what is currently happening with Karen. And, uh, one of the challenges that comes up is they get a bucket of money from the state to work on projects. Um, and what they do is they just take the number of projects and divide that money so the, the amount that's written into the grant doesn't necessarily directly correlate to the amount of hours that they're expecting to spend on it. Cause like, I thought it was weird that they did a thirty thousand grant for the solar bylaw, but they only did an eighteen thousand grant for the town center project, which is a huge amount of work. Uh, and that apparently is the reason that happens because they just. They get, they get from the state and they just divide it up amongst the projects that they think they can carry out during that time period.
I mean, from our perspective, as to how they allocate the money and how they divvy that up. Quite frankly, it's, it's not what is important to us. For us, what is important is, is the finished product and the timeline by when it's gonna be done. I know that this board very specifically has had some very great concern about the master plan that it's been just so long. And so that's, that's why I'm asking the question. And I, I mean, I think it's good that this board, specifically with the meeting that you and, and Alice had with them, are holding them accountable. And to some extent also maybe holding their feet to the fire. Um, but I, I think at some point in time, and I'm hoping that that's what they're gonna be coming back with. Is, um, timelines by when to expect this here.
Mm-hmm.
Because ultimately, we as a town need to have something in front of us that we can then also present to our town folk.
Yeah, I, I wholeheartedly agree with you because about half of that stuff was supposed to be ready for the spring town meeting and it's not.
Exactly, yeah.
And, uh, I I don't wanna go too far into, uh, into things that don't necessarily move us forward. But I am particularly frustrated that at the end of, um, of the engagement for the senior planner that we worked with. There was no draft produced for the solar bylaw.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm, I'm not, I'm not sure what's happened. And I'm, I'm not, I'm not sure what's happened to that, I don't know if it got misplaced, if it just got for, forgotten, missing to us. But I find it pretty frustrating that we sent essentially a draft of what that needed to be, and we didn't get anything back on it, so. Those are the issues that Karen's investigating, and I'm, I'm optimistic, uh, to figuring those out. Uh, within the next meeting or two. Uh, especially, uh, especially with Nate, Nate is very much, um. Involved and passionate about these issues, and he has, uh, fairly good relationships with some of the folks over at M, uh, MRPC from his previous work. So I think we're gonna get there, for, for the time being, we're running all of the project management. For MRPC through the town administrator office, and Nate and I are catching up about what's going on a couple times a week. Uh, because by putting it to full-time paid staff, uh, particularly full-time paid staff that has a lot to say over. The work that we do with them, uh, it makes it easier for clear lines of accountability on both ends. So we, we hopefully have all that sorted out. And are looking forward to getting some. Some good output here on these projects and finally getting them tied off. I don't know, Alice, have you had anything else to add from that meeting?
You know, I do have something to add, it might be more under a, more matters not anticipated by the chair, but can I throw something out at you guys? So you know, there's been some interest about this me- the Marinelli land, land behind the, you know, we got a note from them.
Yep.
And, um, I just had a thought, um. So one of the things that I've always thought was really restrictive on that land is our five hundred foot dead end street. And I had this thought that if you actually, it's a, and the loop roads are counted, but they're only counted if the loop road comes and, and. Ti- ties back into the one road, you know, the one drive. So I was thinking if we have enough frontage with our lot. Uh, with a town-owned lot, you might be able to actually have a, an entry in an act, you know, a road that goes around. And comes back with separate, two separate entries onto Pitcherville. Because it's not technically a dead end road or a loop road, as long as it doesn't connect back to itself. And it might really be a way to open up that back land.
That's an interesting thought.
And I, and I, I just wanted to bring it up because I, it just didn't occur to me. Uh, I know that, I know the way it's written is it's only one right of way through our land, about through the, you know, town's land. Then it would have to be negotiated, but it may be a way to unlock that land. And I, and I felt bad because I, I copied the dead end street lamp, you know, just as I left and I stuck it in Nathan's box. And then I'm thinking, I didn't really think this through, cause when, when I read it, I read the loop road, but that wouldn't be a loop road, we did it that way.
Yeah, no, that's an interesting thought, well, we'll be sure to bring that to, to Nate, Nate's trying to, to get a hold and meet with the representatives to talk about it.
We'd have to, uh, you'd have to have a hundred, the right of ways are fifty for the road, right? Fifty on each side and enough frontage, but I think that has, has a lot of frontage, the town lot, it's like. I don't know, I, I could look it up on access GIS, but. But it was just an error I made, insisting that this was the limit on that land, and maybe it's not, right?
Yeah, no, I, I, I appreciate you bringing that up and we'll, we'll, we'll bring that today.
Think about it, think about it, because it's also very difficult to. It would be very difficult to get access on the other side, not only because you, you know, you had to find somebody willing to sell you the access, right? But also, it's, it's got a lot of wetlands and habitat and, you know, I don't know, I think it ought to be thought of, looked at.
Yeah, yeah, no, that's, that's a good thought.
I, I apologize, but in the interest of transparency, uh, Alice, you had mentioned that there's been some news on the Marinellis, other. I mean, I remember there was some news last year that they had been approached, but can you, in the interest for those who are here and those who.
I don't know, I, I don't know a lot about it, Christopher could fill you in a little bit.
Yeah, some, uh, some representatives regarding the property reached out to the town to have, uh. Discussions about possible uses, there haven't been any meetings or anything about that yet. Uh, Nate is looking to set up a meeting and figure out what they're, they're considering and talk about some ideas. And then Nate's gonna meet with us.
So it's general increase?
Ma- ma- Marinelli has put it on the market, so there are interested buyers.
Originally it was supposed to be a solar field was the plan, and then the solar people backed out, they didn't exercise their option. And it's been sort of in limbo ever since, I think. But I do think that we ought to, I can send Nathan a message to that and, and copy everybody on it if you want. About what the frontage is and it's just a thought.
Uh, I'll certainly, Mark and I will certainly bring that up with Nate.
Okay.
And it's also on the record form too, so. Yeah, um, I'll be sure to, to keep the board, um, uh, apprised of anything that goes on with that.
Thank you.
Um, there's nothing that's gone on with it yet, though. Alright, so, uh, on, on a similar vein, and, um. It didn't occur to me until after we had released this agenda, there, there was a Northern Rail. Uh, Northern Tier Rail meeting that was done by Mass DOT. Uh, and what they've done is they've come up with six possible plans that, um. Or six concepts that they're presenting to the public for feedback, to put together as potential projects for Northern Rail expansion. They presented two of them at the last meeting, uh, at the next meeting, they're gonna present another four. Uh, as it is now, it's really been focused on Amtrak style passenger rail. Which, uh, wouldn't necessarily create a, um, an MBTA zoning problem for us. But there's four more solutions that they're gonna need to present. And in the first two solutions, they were just talking about a very limited number of stations, they were looking at just stations and, um. Greenfield and, um. North Adams, way out west. But yeah, they were talking about a limited number of stations, I don't know what the other four are gonna look like. But, uh, it's definitely something I'm following along with, because we've talked about it at previous meetings, it could have a huge impact for the town. Uh, if, uh, all, all that would need to happen for us to get pulled into MBTA zoning would be a station. For the commuter rail to be in an abundant town to us, or for, uh, MBTA bus service to be into our town, so. Uh, right now, we. The, but yeah, but right now, the track is about a hundred feet away from, from pulling us into it. Uh, the, the tracks actually run into Westminster, it's just the station is actually in, um, actually in Fitchburg. The West Houston train stop, so, um, so yeah, we're, we're watching it. Um, Nate's a, uh, Nate's been apprised of the issue too, and, um. I'm doing what I can to make sure other people are following along, so, we should all keep an eye out for that, cause it is potentially impactful. But, uh, but there isn't a lot to report back on it yet. Alright, so anything else under matters not recently anticipated by chair?
I, I just want to, uh, I, I don't know if this is appropriate at this point in time, and you can guide me. Uh, the matter of, uh, the vertex towers and the subsequent, um. The, the subsequent fact that we were, uh, that this went to court, is that something that you could, if, uh, be so kind, just. Explore how do we can get a final, if, if there is such a thing as a final, uh. Report out to the members of this board?
Yep, there were some developments about that today.
I'm not asking you to do it today, but I'm just, if we can prepare for the next time we have the meeting, that would be good.
Yeah, we can, the, there were some developments that happened today, we can't really talk about them, because we didn't have enough time to put together an executive session.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, but there were some developments, it's still an ongoing thing.
So if you would kindly just include those as part of potentially a future agenda?
Yeah, uh, can you add a, an executive session to the next meeting, Mark?
Okay.
Excellent. Uh, anything else?
Got a door prize for Francois.
Door prize?
Ooh.
All the certificate, it's citations, I loved it.
Oh my god.
Yeah. And.
She must be recognized for the work you do, you know?
Or shake somebody's hand?
Yeah, you, you missed your chance.
Take, take, take some pictures.
They, they were here at the meeting that night.
Well, thank you for, uh. Thank you.
Uh, so with that, uh, any additional comments from the public? Yep.
Mike Stolf, I'd Lombard Road, could you just explain the Marinelli, uh, parcel, where's that located?
I can give you the site, uh, hang on one second.
I, I tried to.
On, uh, Pitcherville Road and it's accessories parcel. Oh, I just had it.
I, I tried to pick up next, um, access GIS and it's not loading here.
Do you, do you know where the big, do you know where the big solar field is on Pitcherville?
Yes.
It's, the property is just to the west.
Okay, thank you. That's it.
The Mar- Marinelli crew is a bunch of parcels.
The old gravel pits.
They're back in there.
Okay.
The town, the town parcel that's in front.
Say gravel pits, yes. Yep.
Is, uh, oh, is map three, lot fifty-seven.
Okay.
It's thirteen point six acres, but I don't know what the frontage is, I'll have to look it up.
That's the town parcel.
Yeah, that's the fifty-seven Pitcherville. Alright, any additional public comments?
None.
Alright, so, uh, if we don't have anything else, do we have a motion?
A motion for nothing else? I'd like to present a motion that we, uh, close this meeting for, uh, uh, this planning board meeting, return.
How about, uh, second?
I'll second that motion.
Karen, the first and second, uh, not discussable?
Aye.
Aye. Monroe?
Aye.
The motion carries.
Boy, this has been the short.
Again, sorry guys.
Ah, no problem.
This has been the shortest meeting.